Okay, I've got seven. You ready? All right, here we go. Good evening, everyone. If everyone can take their seats, please. My name is Mara Curran. I'm the town moderator. And with a quorum being present, I declare a special town meeting to come to order. Do you have a motion? So moved, second? Thank you very much. I've been advised by the town clerk that the warrant has been properly served. I would entertain a motion dispersed with a formal reading of the warrant. The warrant was posted on October 7th, 2025. Do I have a motion to disperse to the formal reading? So moved, second? Thank you. We have duly sworn in an assistant moderator, who is John Dennehy. John and the following tellers have been sworn in by the town clerk: Anne Blame, Andrea Gillis, Kathy McGowan, Chris Marachi, Linda Plowman, Allison Short, Sally Meish, and Michelle Greenleaf. And before I move on, I'd like everyone to rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you to the assistant moderator and to all those tellers who have volunteered this evening. I would like at this time to ask the Select Board Chair, Andrew Goodrich, to come forth and introduce his board and other members of town administration. Andrew?
Thank you. To my right, your left, we have our Finance Director, Nancy Holt, our Town Administrator, Jim Boudreaux, co-chair Susan Harrison, our Clerk, Jamie Gilmore, Freya Schlegel, Dr. Niko Afanisenko, and our Town Council, Brian Bertram.
Did you want any remarks, Andrew?
Yeah, so I actually have some good news to announce. Number one, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight on this cold and rainy day. I want to thank Nancy and Jim, Kevin Cafferty from DPW, Corey Miles, Karen Joseph, and Will Branton, and our consultants at Woodward &amp; Curran, able to announce some wonderful news that Mass Works will be granting the town of Situate a $5 million grant. This isn't a bond. This is actual real money, $5 million for the construction of the North Situate Sewer System. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the Chair of the Advisory Committee, Dan McGuigan, to introduce his board.
Good evening. Thanks for all for coming out. The Advisory Committee, to my left, I have Ms. Seidel, my co-chair, Jerry Kelly, Mark DeCosmo, Connor Doherty, Laura Jamison, Linda Ferguson, Matthew McKinley, and we have our... I'm sorry. I can't see her down there. Megan Bigelow, sorry, I couldn't see her. I didn't want to yell at anything that wasn't true. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. And I'd like to ask the Chair of the School Committee, Nicole Brandalini, to come forth and introduce her board as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'd like to introduce the Situate School Committee. My Vice Chair, Maria Fenwick, Secretary Peter Gates. I have Janice Lombard with me, our interim Superintendent, Dr. Rab, and our interim Director of Business and Finance, Irene Hool.
Thank you, Nicole. At this time, I would just like to take a moment in silence to remember the following who have served Situate and who have recently departed. In memoriam, we honor Allerton Bonnie, an election worker; Mary Troy, a past Situate schoolteacher; Kenneth E. Me, a past Situate Fire Department Personnel; Patricia E. G. McCarthy from the Situate Schools; Michael V. Ladrigan, the Situate Police Department; James R. Logar Jr., an election worker; and finally, Karen Connolly, my friend and our colleague, who served not only on the Advisory Committee, the Community Preservation Committee, and the Select Board. Please take a moment to remember them all. Thank you. I'm just going to go through a little bit of the mechanics of the meeting. As the moderator, I chair the meeting and decide the questions of order. I do not vote on any of the articles. So please let me take just a little bit to tell you about how the meeting works. The town of Situate has two branches of government: the Executive Branch, represented here today by the Select Board and the School Committee, and the Legislature Branch, which is represented by town meeting, which is each and every one of you as a citizen legislator. The Executive Branch boards have made requests, asking you for your approval, and these requests take the form of the articles in the warrant. The purpose of this meeting is to allow you, the citizen legislators, to review the Executive Branch requests. You are within your rights as citizen legislators to question the Executive Branch and then to act upon those requests as you see fit. In other words, this is your meeting. Also, you have a board that evaluates all articles on your behalf, your Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee is your board. They meet all year long, examining Executive Branch budgets and other articles that come before them for review. The Advisory Committee works very hard serving as your watchdog, and it will make recommendations to you about each of the articles before you this evening. Like any legislative body, we all operate under certain procedural rules, which I will review at this time. All non-voters, except professional consultants advising town boards, must sit in the non-voter section to the left front bleacher, which is over here to my right. Ordinarily, only registered voters may address the meeting. However, I will assume the consent of the meeting to allow non-voters to speak, provided that they are duly recognized and unless a timely objection is raised. Persons wishing to address this meeting must, at each time when they rise to speak, identify themselves to the meeting by your name and your address. This traditional courtesy shows respect to those present and helps in the keeping of meeting minutes. Speakers representing a board, community group, or a client should state this relationship to the meeting. If you are an article sponsor, please make your motion first, before you speak about the article you are endorsing. Otherwise, it will be considered out of order. After making that motion, an article sponsor will be allowed up to 10 minutes for a presentation. And sponsors of any of the resolutions will be allowed up to five. All motions must be seconded, and no motion is in order until it has been a second. Town meeting members are encouraged to speak from the center mic right before me. And I will attempt to recognize members in order as they arrive to the various microphones. Only after recognized by the moderator may a member address the meeting. Shouting out from the floor, speaking without recognition, shows disrespect to your fellow town meeting members and will not be allowed. Speakers from the floor are allowed five minutes on the first round of discussion and three minutes on the second. A speaker from the floor who wishes to address the meeting for a second time on an article must wait until persons who have not yet spoken have had their turn. Please indicate whether you are in support of the motion on the floor or not, as you summarize your comments. Also, speakers, please confine your remarks to the motion on the floor and address only matters of general interest. Do not indulge in personal discussion or in any way attack the motives of a meeting member or a board member. You may ask questions of any town official through the moderator. Be advised that a town official may choose not to respond or may respond in a way that you find unsatisfactory. But neither the moderator nor the meeting has the power to compel an answer, in which case your sole recourse is to draw your own conclusions from the quality of the response. Should you tire of the debate, you may offer to move the motion by saying, "I move the question." Please remember this important procedural point: you may not make a motion to move the question after making a speech. Please just make the motion and save your speech. A point of order relates only to questions of procedure and is not a mechanism for reviving an article or prolonging a debate. There are no points of information. A question about an article should be raised only during the debate of that article. On voice votes, I will listen to hear whether the motion passes or fails. If you question my call, please rise. And if seven or more of you rise, we will ask for a teller-counted vote. Section 20150G by the bylaws allow this moderator to declare two-thirds votes. If the moderator's declaration is immediately questioned by seven or more voters, we will take that count. Please keep in mind that the acoustics in this room can be difficult, so please speak clearly into the microphone. Closer is better. And at this time, please silence your cell phones. There is a wireless microphone available to those who may need it. Please just let us know, and we'll have someone come over to you and bring that microphone to your seat, should you need. There are no reports to go through, so at this time, we will move to the First Order of Business, which is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda are warrant articles that the Select Board and the town moderator have deemed likely not to generate controversy and can be properly voted without debate. You will see in the beginning of your advisory booklet a listing of eight articles that I will read for your review. If you are in agreement, we will vote the entire lot of those articles together as one vote. That vote will require a two-thirds majority. However, I'm going to read those articles first. If there is an article that you wish to take out of the Consent Agenda and vote individually, please just say "hold" very loudly, and we will pull that out of order and take that up on its own. So before I move over to the motion, I am going to read the articles that are included. If you would like it held, please yell "hold." Article 1, unpaid prior-year bills. Article 2, FY26 budget reconciliations. Article 3, capital improvement plan. Article 4, transfers to reserves. Article 6, maintenance improvement and protection of open spaces. Article 8, revolving fund limits. Article 9, amend general bylaws, Section 10420, tax title property. And Article 10, amend the general bylaws, Section 3400, the animal control bylaw. Not hearing any "holds," we will review those articles together under the Consent Agenda. And for the motion, Select Board Member, Andrew Goodrich.
I move that the town vote to take Articles 1, unpaid prior-year bills; 2, FY26 budget reconciliations; 3, capital improvement plan; 4, transfers to reserves; 6, maintenance improvement and protection of open spaces; 8, revolving fund limits; 9, amend general bylaws, Section 10420, tax title property; and 10, amend general bylaws, Section 30400, animal control bylaw. Out of order, and that they be passed by consent in accordance with the motions shown on the Consent Agenda distributed this evening.
We have a motion. We have a second. From the Advisory Board, Dan McGuigan.
The Advisory Board voted on the Consent Agenda voting it as a whole, and it was voted unanimously, 6-0.
Thank you. All those in favor, say "aye." All those opposed? I declare the Consent Agenda passed. Unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Article 5, Community Preservation. For the Select Board, Jamie Gilmore.
Good evening, everybody. And I too want to thank you for coming out on this dreary pre-winter night. Motion, Article 5, Community Preservation. I move that the Town Act on Recommendations from the Community Preservation Committee, the CBC, and pursuant to Mass General Legislation, Chapter 44B, the Act, to appropriate the sums of money as indicated in the printed warrant: 1 for the acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space; 2 for the acquisition, creation, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of land for recreational use; 3 for the acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of historic resources; and 4 for the creation, acquisition, preservation, and support of community housing. Appropriations for the items below are to be expended, first from any existing reserves for the purposes of such item, then appropriated from Community Preservation Fiscal Year 2026 estimated revenues, with any excess to be appropriated from Community Preservation unreserved funds, unless otherwise specified below. All such sums appropriated are further to be expended, subject to all the terms and conditions of the applications regarding such projects filed with the CPC and the votes of the CPC regarding approval of such items.
Do I have a second? Second. For the... Do you have anything additional, Jamie? Is that it? Okay. For the Advisory Board, Ms. Seidel.
Good evening. The Community Preservation Committee is requesting funding for one open space and three historical resource projects. The $750,000 purchase of the 16.4-acre Dishpan Property is in keeping with the Situate's strategy to increase conservation areas in town and protect undeveloped open spaces. As this property abuts the existing 37-acre Higgins-McAllister Conservation Property, it will increase passive recreation with walking trails and preserve open space for wildlife. The PNS is signed with contingency of town meeting approval and clear title. The three historic resource projects are for the continued restoration of the Cudworth House and Barn, Mordecai Lincoln House, and the G.A.R. Hall. The Advisory Committee was satisfied that the funding requests for each of these projects was well-vetted and in keeping with the Tenets of the Community Preservation Act. The Advisory Committee recommends approval of this article with a unanimous vote, 6 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you. And from Community Preservation, Dan Fennerly.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. First of all, I'd like to thank the members of the committee, which include myself, Anne Burbine, Jill Caffrey, Matt Chase, Skylar Chek, the co-chair, the Penney Scott Pipes, Elise Russo, Meg Stillman, and Jack Whitaker. So thank you for your work this year. We have, as was said before, we have four projects. One is the Clapp Road property. I'm not going to go into great detail unless people have questions on these. The property is a 16, over 16-acre property that abuts conservation property already, be a great addition to the town's property holdings and be able to use that as a recreational facility adjoining the existing park that's there right now. We do have a signed purchase and sale contingent on approval at the town meeting for the property for $700,000. And we have a $50,000 contingency that's there for any closing cost or unexpected cost, as well as putting the conservation restriction on the property. The second project was the G.A.R. Hall lighting upgrades. It's a $3,500. If you've been there, you know there's inadequate lighting on the outside of the building for the parking lot, and this is to remedy that situation. It's a small amount. The Historic Society is providing $1,200 toward this project as well, and there's a small contingency included in the project. This project, as well as the next one, is going to be managed by the Historic Society's property manager. The next project is the Cudworth Home Barn and Roof Replacement and renovation for $145,000. The Cudworth House is in dire need of both the house and the barn, replacing the roofs on the structures, which are over 20 years old, particularly the barn houses, some historic resources that the town has always purchased. And this is basically to protect them, as well as some structural requirements for the house itself that needs some beam replacement and things like that. The request is for the... I'm sorry. The request for the renovation will again be managed by the Historic Society property manager. The last project is the Mordecai Lincoln House, which I'll call phase one of the restoration of the house. As everybody knows, there is a committee deciding what to do with the Mordecai Lincoln House, and the committee is requesting some immediate funds to remediate some issues that are of immediate nature in repairing the building, to stop ingress of water into the basements, to fix some structural requirements that are there, and basically address the immediate needs in order to get the property renovated and into shape to be used by the town. Those are the four projects that we have. I thank you for your consideration. Are there any questions from the floor?
At this time, if there are any questions, please come up to one of the microphones. Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Do you have a question? Please go to the center microphone and state your name and address.
Hi. My name is Mare Kadem. 84-man hill road. I have only one question. Where is it located, this Dishpan? It would be helpful if you...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's known as the Dishpan Property. I think that's an old name. It's off of Clapp Road, near the intersection of Booth Hill Road. So there are properties on Booth Hill Road. Behind that are the two properties that we're considering in buying right now, and they have frontage on Clapp Road.
There's also a map, sir, on page 31 of your advisory booklet. Are there any other questions? Seeing none? This motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say "aye." All those opposed? I declare the vote unanimous. Thank you. We will move on to Article 7, the Desalinization Technology Study. For the Select Board, Freya Schlegel.
Thank you. I move the town appropriate the sum of $120,000 for a study to understand the potential of using desalinization technology to clean saltwater or reclaimed water to augment our existing water supply and potential cost impact. Funds to be expended under the direction of the Department of Public Works and the Water Resource Commission. The intended use would be for non-potable applications like golf course irrigation and potable applications, including discharging of the clean water to aquifer recharge zones to increase future well volume and water supply. And to fund such appropriation, transfer $120,000 from free cash.
Do I have a second? A second? Mr. Goodrich? Freya?
Our water supply in our wells and surface water depends on whether it rains. In these increasing times of drought, we must explore ways of augmenting our water supply. This study will help us show the cost and the feasibility of reverse osmosis and desalinization. The Water Resource Commission and Bob DiLorenzo have been working on this for two years, and now it is time to call on the experts. This study will see if we can use ocean water, river water, or reclaimed water to help augment our water supply. And here is our Chair of the Water Resource Commission, Bruce Arbenes, to speak more of this.
Thank you, Freya. Before Bruce comes up, I'd like to ask Jerry Kelly from the Advisory Committee for his recommendation.
Thank you, Mara. And thank you all for coming out tonight. It's a privilege to be able to advise you as members of town meeting on this Article 7 presented to you tonight. So why are we considering this? Well, take a look at your water bills, your water bans, and your deadline each year. We don't have enough water. The request tonight is for $122,000 to study desalination technology for use by Situate. These halination costs historically have been very high, but have decreased while traditional freshwater costs continue to increase. The primary costs of desalinization include capital investment in either the millions or tens of millions of dollars. Size tech... And that's based upon the size, the technology, and the installation costs. Another cost driver are the energy costs. This is a very energy-intensive operation. And any time that you're dealing with seawater or brackish water, maintenance, chemicals, on the pumps, membranes, and others become a big consideration, as well as the disposal of the brine, which is concentrated salt. Finally, skilled staffing is hard to come by here. Desalination should be viewed as a supplement to the other water supply tools. Cost estimates are $2 to $3 a gallon for seawater desalination. Treating brackish water will be less expensive. Solar energy may provide a cost-effective solution for our energy costs. You heat up the water, it evaporates, and then you have condensation. And the National Science Foundation of China has been able to experiment and come up with suitcase-sized desalination solutions. Successful implementations have occurred at our own Heavily Country Club, in the towns of Plymouth and Yarmouth, and on a larger scale in El Paso, Texas, and Perth in Western Australia. This warrant is only for the approval of funds for a study of the viability of desalination in Situate. I want to thank very much the expert members of the committee that have given their expertise and their time. The Advisory Committee unanimously supports the approval of this Article 7 by a vote of 6 to nothing.
Thank you, Jamie. And from the Water Resources Committee, Bruce Arbenes.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. It's a pleasure to have the opportunity to speak with you today, but unfortunately, Situate has very limited surface water capacity, which becomes a big issue when we have droughts. Now, we moved into town in 2018, and actually, it was March of 2018. You don't remember this, but we had four No Easters that March. So after that Welcome to Situate event for us, we never could imagine that we were going to have droughts in 2020, 2022, and 2024. And by the color of my front yard, this past summer was pretty dry as well. And we all know that our population increases significantly during the summertime, which is our peak period. And the fact that we, at the same time, share aquifers with different communities means, in a drought situation, by the end of the summer, water pressure in the wells goes down, and we can't get as much water out as we want to. Now, DPW, I believe, has done a good job looking for additional water sources. They've test-drilled well sites all across town over the last few years, but unfortunately, without success. So we are still looking for a new, consistent, and substantial water source to augment our water supply. So can desalin... So can desalination provide an answer? Well, that's the question Bob DiLorenzo and his subcommittee brought to the Water Resources Commission. About two years ago, that subcommittee was established, and I'd like to thank Rick Cohn, Eric Seda, Mark Fenton, and James Newman, three of which are engineers with extensive implementations of water systems, working with Army Corps of Engineers, and I believe Mark was on the planning board for several years. So what have we learned so far? It's been a couple of years. As we heard, the desalination technology keeps changing, the cost keeps coming down, which is great. There are a couple of different technologies to look at, reverse osmosis and ion polarity. And we've probably all heard about desalination plants, both domestically and internationally. But I also wanted to mention, it's been mentioned here briefly, that many communities, both in the U.S. and around the world, are looking at cleaning reclaimed water for further use. Now, reclaimed water is water coming out of the sewer treatment plant called wastewater. A couple of examples, Orange County, 2.5 million folks just south of Los Angeles, and El Paso, Texas, a large city. What they do is they take their reclaimed water, they hit it with UV rays and some additional processing, and then they inject that into their aquifers. They've done that for about 20 years now. So they're getting a lot more out of their wells from that activity than they could before So it was mentioned that we have a reverse osmosis plant in town, Hathaway Country Club. They had saltwater intruding into their wells, which was problematic for them. So Rick Cohn, who's a member there, and with the proper expertise, designed and implemented a plant there. If they ran it a little more than they currently do, they could pump out about 300,000 gallons. That's an important number for us because our biggest well, the well that produces the most water, is about 300,000. So the hardware cost to clean that was pretty affordable. Now, there are a couple of issues there. It's brackish water, not pure ocean water, and you probably want to clean a little bit more before you do something in addition to it. But the biggest costs were implementation, where you put the plant, how do you move water around, things like that. Gets complicated, and again, that's why we're asking for this money, for some expertise to help us work through these situations. But I also wanted to highlight opportunities with reclaimed water. It may be of interest to you that the water we push out from our sewer treatment plant is cleaner than the water in the North River. One of the things we do at our sewer treatment plant is hit the water with UV rays, which helps to clean up a lot of it. The other opportunity with reclaimed water is that by diverting water out of the North River to another process that we would institute, it actually increases the capacity of the sewer treatment plant. We're limited in the amount of water we can push out, and we're running close to where we want that output to be currently. So any amount of water that we divert effectively increases the sewer capacity. So we believe there are viable opportunities, but there's a lot of options to sort out. Multiple technologies, we have different sources, ocean water, river water, reclaimed water, potable, non-potable uses. There are challenges in terms of implementation, that's where the big cost is, and mass DEP regs as well. So we'll be commissioning the consultant to look at that in addition. So we need some expert help to work through our options, and that's why we're asking for this money. So in conclusion, support for this article will lead to answers identifying which options are feasible from a cost and implementation perspective. And implementing a new, consistent, and substantial water source can have a significant long-term benefit to the town, and I encourage you all to vote yes on Article VII. Look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Bruce. Are there any questions from the audience? Gentlemen to my right.
Scott Greenbaum, 40 Damon Road. I think we have too large of a scope on this RFP. I've done a lot of research. There are three municipal desalination plants on the East Coast. Cape May, they have a 500% to 600% increase in population during the summer, so you can understand that. Their geography, geology is pretty similar to ours. There's one in Taunton, there's one in locally, but they're brackish, but they were built a long time ago. There was one in Rockland that has been held up due to financing for at least 10 years after approved. There's been over 20 studies, including hulls, to look at desalinization. Nobody's going forward. It's just way too expensive. The water's really expensive. I mean, it's much higher than our highest-tier cost for our own residents right now. It takes a lot of energy, and the plants are very expensive to build. I think you mentioned that, well, if we look at it, we have an increase of usage of 500,000 to 800,000 gallons in the summer over the winter. A plant of that size will cost us 20 to 50 billion, million dollars in today's dollars, based on the costs that I had seen. That's a fairly significant debt exclusion. And RO water, that's pushing water backwards through a filter. That's, you know, we got to build by a lot of filters. I've run a desalinization plant using steam, and that takes a lot of water, and a lot of steam, and a lot of energy. I just don't see looking at a bunch of technologies that are not going to bring us any closer. The idea of using the discharge from these wastewater treatment plant, that's an excellent idea, because that water comes out of there cleaner than what we get in our tap. And I've been in a lot of wastewater treatment plants. They have to go through, they have, everything is cleaned out. It has to have no biological, biological discharges. It gets UVed, and that's the only thing I can think of. We go to the water district and pump the water up on the ground and let it filter into the thing. So I think we can probably get this type of study for 25, 50,000 dollars. We don't need to spend a lot of time going over things that we already know that are not worth going over. It's a lot of money to come out of, you know, out of reserves. This town has a lot of problems and a lot of needs, and a lot of things that they're going to have to spend money on, and wasting a lot of extra money on a study that we're not going to learn from two-thirds of it. Thank you. Bye.
For the town...
Joe, I'm here, Spahn.
Andrew Goodrich.
Thank you, actually. I want to thank you for actually agreeing with our position and what actually this article does, because the majority of this that we talk about is actually for irrigation. And you talk about using reclaimed and using some of the different water and doing what Hathaway does. So let's keep this simple, all right? This is about the art of the possible. We've looked at this for two years, and the least expensive way is to divert water instead of using treated water that you drink to put on the golf course. There could be ways to use reclaimed water and other sorts of water from different sources to irrigate different places around town. If you do that, that means you save water over there for the wells. That is, after two years of looking, that is the most likely scenario of what we're looking. We're not talking about building some huge thing out of the ocean. No. The likelihood is exactly what you said was probably the easiest way to go, which is reclaiming that water in different areas to then save the wells and other places. And this study is simply looking for the art of the possible. What can we do? What can we not do? And personally, I think we owe it to, after two years of looking and everyone up here saying, "Let's keep going, I think we can do it." So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodrich. Any further statements? Gentlemen at the center mic.
Yes, Bob DiLorenzo, 26 Hickory Lane. I am part of the Water Resource Commission Subcommittee that was mentioned earlier. Thank you very much for the questions and the comments. I think they're extremely valid. Let me try to address a few of them. $120,000, I think there's nothing worse than asking the town for money and finding out that you didn't ask for enough. I think there's more than we'll probably need for a study that's in this article. We would hope so. Secondarily, you mentioned the one in Taunton, which was rife with political issues in terms of commitments that the town had to make to buy water versus people leaving, and it was a contractual thing that got totally messed up. I think there's two points that are missing. We mentioned Hathaway. One of the big points of this article was the word augment. We're not looking to replace the entire water supply of Situate. We're looking to try to find some consistent water supply that would deliver anywhere from 300,000 to 500,000 gallons a day. That would be about a third of what we normally use. So when we talk about power, when we talk about size, we think of Tampa, San Diego, some of the others that I mentioned, they were providing water for a whole city. We're trying to get some consistent, continuous replenishment supply right from the water that's outside our front door. With regard to costs in Hathaway, Bruce mentioned Hathaway's generating, they could generate 300,000 to 500,000 a day if they kept it running. The cost of the equipment, the desalination equipment, was actually $300,000. The infrastructure was the big cost. They had no pipes to get the water to where it needed to go. Fortunately, we have infrastructure. So by getting experts to come in here and looking to study what's most feasible, what's most cost-effective, and what's going to deliver against the objective of 300,000 to 500,000 gallons of water, that's where we need your support for the $120,000. Lastly, I think we've all heard, when we talk about infrastructure projects, at the federal, state, or local level, you hear comments like, "This is work that should have been done 20 years ago. This is work that should have been done 30 years ago." Your approval of this article tonight gets us started so in 10 or 15 years, we're not having this conversation about how we need more water. So thank you.
Lady at the center of the mic?
Heather Clark, 60 Brockton Ave. I worry about water in town as much as everybody else. In fact, I remember when our reservoir was one-inch puddle back in 2015, so it's a serious concern. I think we can all assume, based on the studies that have already been done on current technology, that this will be very expensive. If we were investing or considering a big investment for drinking water, then of course it would warrant a study. But spending money in order to study something that we know will be expensive to the town in order to irrigate golf courses, you know, I as a taxpayer, it doesn't sit well with me to subsidize the lawn care of the country club.
Mr. Madron?
If the article also has a portion, we're going to be looking at using treated wastewater to augment our groundwater supplies. The town of Plymouth right now has a pilot project where they're distributing 750,000 gallons a day into sand beds that then go into the groundwater and recharge their groundwater well. So that's a large portion of this, but we would take a portion of our wastewater, potentially use that to recharge our wells. Plymouth is now in the process of upping that permit from 750,000 gallons a day to 3 million gallons a day. So part of this study is to augment our water supply by potentially having a recharge of our wells using the treated wastewater.
I would also like, I would also, he's tall, would also like to add that there are some communities around the country now that are doing things like cleaning the reclaimed water, purifying it, UV rays, additional processing, and they pump it out where it eventually ends up in the reservoirs, mingles with other existing water, and then gets moved through their water treatment plant as needed and cleaned there again. So there are some other opportunities we'll probably be taking a look at as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the floor? Seeing none, we will move to vote on the motion. This motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor of funding the desalinization technology studies, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The ayes win it. The majority, I declare, the motion passes. We will move on to the last article of the evening, which is Article 11, special legislation. For the Select Board, Dr. Niko.
I move that the town authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court to enact legislation as shown in the printed warrant.
Second? Do we have a second? They did.
Thank you.
Freya?
Fairly simple. This article discusses the idea of taking current notices that need to be printed in newspapers and follow current state and town bylaw, which costs a lot of money, to allow the town to print, not print, but put on digital formats like our town website, et cetera, in multiple formats, as you see in the warrant, so that we can save a lot of money on printing costs for legal notices.
And for the Advisory Board, Connor Doherty.
This is one that we were actually split on, 50/50, with the folks who were able to attend that meeting, three for, three against. The thinking was that we were pretty much all in agreement that it's a significant cost, and it's an outdated, borderline archaic form of communicating with the general population, the citizenry of the town. At the same time, there were some of us who felt that if there are still individuals in town, in the citizenry, who are engaging with their civic duty via printed notices in the newspaper, then we shouldn't just yet be cutting this. The spend, the actual cost, is a fraction of a percentage of the total town budget each year. So we just figured, you know, it's hundreds of years of tradition behind printing public notices in the newspaper. It might be time to end that and save some money, but maybe not quite yet. So we voted three for, three against.
Thank you. Any discussion from the floor? Center microphone?
Anne Burbine, 10 Penny Chris Road. Sometimes we need to be still old-fashioned, and I like paper. And there are a lot of us, it's unfortunate, it's truly unfortunate that we no longer have a local paper. We don't. And there are people in this town that do not utilize computers, social media. Of course, I am of the opinion that social media is the worst thing that ever happened. But that said, I think we still need to put it in the paper. We need to send out the notices. People need to be informed. I cannot support this article. Thank you.
Seeing no one else at the mic, this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I declare a majority. This motion passes. So, that concludes our meeting. It was a short meeting this evening. I thank you all for coming out this evening, and thank you to the clerk and all of the town staff that helped. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. The seconded, have a great evening. Thank you.